Water, Robo.
Mr. Danglour?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt here. Dr. Sally?
Here.
Mrs. Widdis?
Here.
And I hereby certify this meeting has been published in newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and the posters required by law.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Michelle to please move forward and talk about the proposed ordinance releasing balloons. How are you?
I'm with the Long Branch Environmental Commission.
Please talk into the mic.
Ah, sorry. I'm with the Long Branch Environmental Commission. Today, I'd like to propose an ordinance for the city of Long Branch to be added to our health regulations preventing intentional release of balloons into the atmosphere. It has been noted that balloons filled with lighter-than-air gases pose a grave danger to particularly local wildlife and marine animals. So being an ocean community, we would like to see this passed. It has been passed by other local towns, Esberry Park, Redden Beach. And what we would like to see as a penalty is a maximum fine of $500 to anybody caught releasing balloons into the atmosphere. There would be a couple of exceptions to the ordinance. That would be if there's anything for scientific or meteorological purposes. Any hot air balloons, that would be recovered from the air. And any balloons released indoors would be acceptable.
So the only question I have, well, obviously, is we have on for introduction tonight. So any question of, I think it's up to my.
Up to maximum.
Are we okay with that? Or do you want to change it?
Well, I mean, I guess we should.
Yeah, well, the maximum fine for municipal violation is $2,000. So putting it up to $500 is not, you know, I'm not ever concerned about the maximum. I always be concerned if you set a minimum, then a judge would have to do it.
Was that really your first offense?
Well, as it's written right now, it would just be, would it be in the judge's discretion? You know, and between you and I, we changed the wording because noncriminal infraction is probably not the, it's an ordinance violation. So that's probably not, I'm not sure where this form came from. I would correct some of the wording, but yeah, right now, the way it said, there's no minimum, and the judge could go up to $500.
Okay. And how will we enforce this? Like, how do they normally enforce something like this?
Well, honestly, the only way to enforce this is somebody, a police officer, would have to observe somebody doing it. Now, typically, what these ordinances are used for is not, you know, you have a vendor on the beach that sells balloons and a five-year-old loses the handle of it and it goes up in the air. That's really not what it is. What you're really looking to prevent is, you know, if there's a wedding on the beach and they decided that they're going to do blue and white balloons and release them into the air, that's the kind of thing that you're really concerned about. So, but somebody would have to observe it.
Yeah, we just don't want to penalize the people that have a birthday party and the balloon gets up, a couple balloons get out, you know?
Well, it is worded that it is intentional release, so an accidental release would, I guess, be an exception.
Do we have a problem with that now? Giving some balloons?
Well, I think, I think the problem, councilman, is, and there's a lot of evidence of it, and if I'm stepping onto your toes, let me know, is the fact that it's just the amount of these kind of things that are finding their way into the ocean and, you know, we see studies all the time about, you know, the amount of plastics that are inside of fish is just a big extraordinary. So these ordinance have actually just been, you know, it's under the same theory of the, what we're starting to see is just move towards a minimum in plastic straw. Not that there's anything diabolical about a plastic straw. If it's put in a garbage pail and finds its way to a landfill, but when it finds its way to a beach, it finds its way into the ocean and finds its way to the wildlife. So I think that that's, that's really what it is. It's not, the danger isn't, you know, that a balloon gets lifted up and it, you know, brings a plane down, that it's just more garbage that ends up on the, right? Is that, am I correct?
Yes.
I think that's what the argument is. Okay.
I mean, I was on the beach one day last year, and I saw a family, you know, go down there, and they must have been, you know, remembering someone that they lost and just let them all just go, you know? You know, to me, it just doesn't make any sense.
So, you know, I was thinking along the lines, Louis is saying, as you're saying, and totally support everything that you're doing, but kind of the collective picture, you know, I think we did something in terms of the plastic bags and now doing something for the balloons, and I would imagine the straws will be, will.
Not far behind.
Yeah, will be, will be next.
They haven't changed the state law on that yet, have they?
It's being discussed, but nothing has been finalized yet.
But, you know, the idea of really well-publicizing, you know, the whole thing.
Yes.
And I don't know if the environmental committee is talking about that, but, you know, that broader picture and the idea of why are we doing it and the importance of it and everything. So I would just stress that, that we don't, you know, right now, we're doing it kind of step by step, but at some point, however you do it, when.
It is strategic because you have to consider that we are a larger city compared to other local municipalities that have stricter ordinances in place. So in an urban setting, with the amount of businesses that we have, we're trying to be sensitive to incrementally get the word out.
Yeah. So how, how will this be publicized?
Well, as far as the Long Branch Environmental Commission, the city of Long Branch, the mayor, I mean, we've kind of all collaborated, and we've brought a large audience just on social media, quite honestly.
Okay.
Which has reached a vast amount. The Environmental Commission has just started a Trex recycling program where we collect plastic film, particularly plastic bags. Once we've collected 500 pounds, Trex will turn it into a bench that we would like to donate back to the city. Within a matter of a weekend, of all of the social media platforms focusing on this, we had about 4,500 views and a lot of positive reinforcement. And now I'm actually on the committee that actually cleans up the boxes and, you know, cleans them out. There's one downstairs, just in case you need a spot. I mean, I clean it out, I go the next day, it's full again.
Yeah.
So not only does it, number one, highlight what a big problem plastic is, we're going to collect 500 pounds very quickly, I'm nearing 100, and I'm less than two weeks in.
Yeah.
But it also shows how the public is behind this and really supportive. So the sensitive area is really approaching the businesses and what inventory of plastic do they already have in place and maybe putting in a future deadline, like, stop building up your inventory, and this is what we're going to be working towards.
Yeah.
But I think it's more important than ever, especially as a coastal community, because we have the most direct effect on our oceans.
Yeah.
And the towns around us are being very proactive. So it's definitely something that we're looking into a more comprehensive ordinance, but in incremental steps. So, and our social media platforms definitely garner a lot of attention.
Yeah.
From the city.
While we're on the subject, the mayor and I attended the George Catterman School last week, and the students presented, you know, they want us to ban the straws and things like that. And so we've invited them to come to one of our workshops to talk to everyone. So, you know, so they're like really into, they're also collecting the plastic bags for the Trek program as well.
Yes, yes.
But it was, it was a nice presentation, it was very touching.
Yeah.
So we've invited them, I think, the next meeting or the one after.
I wish you'd call.
Yeah, we'll confirm it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
So, you know, we're all working together for a good cause.
Yeah, and as much publicity as we can help you with.
Thank you.
You know, we all kind of immediately go to social, social media, and there's a whole world out there that has nothing, you know, that does not participate in social media. So however we can support you with that, this is wonderful.
I appreciate that.
Work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Oh, wait a minute, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So in terms of the fine, and they, what, what previous, like, for the plastic bags, was there a fine with that? I mean, just so that there's some consistency, I don't know if there was or not.
No, we, we introduced the ordinance so that when the state approves it, well.
Oh, no, that's right.
We didn't adopt the ordinance.
Right.
But that was just a resolution for ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just a resolution.
Yeah, I was just going for consistency.
It's a baby step.
But the question is, it was on for tentative introduction tonight, do you want to hold it because of this language?
Yeah, I'd like to correct the language in it, so if we can, that would be one of the next things to do, is have the next meeting.
Michelle, by the way, there's a couple of full bags somewhere.
Okay.
Kevin or Gene picked up, so you're right, because I think the one that, the box right now is filled right up.
It fills very quickly.
Is it at least three or four?
Yep. It fills very quickly.
And thank you for all the hard work that you and the commission are doing, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. It's, it's nice to be supported.
And next, we're going to have a presentation on Mr. Spalding and Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a key on John Smith. He's with Energy Market Exchange, and he's going to discuss the reverse auction platform as a way for the city to save money on electricity.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. Yes, and this one's yours, and if you could pass these down, that'd be great. So what I'm handing out now is just two samples of what supplier pricing could be in an auction. I think it's going to be better. So just give you an overview, we do, we've been working with New Jersey municipalities, government agencies, local units in New Jersey for almost 10 years now. We have a reverse auction platform at many of the municipalities, government agencies in New Jersey, like Esberry Park, Point Pleasant, Spring Light, Middletown Sewer Authority that will be around here, Bradley Beach, use our platform to procure electricity as opposed to JCP&L, their supply. So we're part of a Department of Community Affairs pilot program that enables you just to pass the resolution and then run the auction, and there's no obligation to move forward after the auction's completed. And if you like what you get, you have to sign the contract in pretty, in a pretty quick time. It's, because supplier rates are time-sensitive, it's like buying a stock. You have to, you basically, when you go out there and you run the auction, if you like what you get, the contract needs to be signed pretty much, if not that day, early the next morning before the market hook-ins or changes. So if you want to look, we can look at these two just as a point of reference. At the very top, it says E-MEX custom pricing analysis prepared for, look at the one that says City of Long Branch first, not the City of Long Branch Lighting. So the start date we're looking at would be May of this year, and your last 12 months, your JCP&L price to compare is .9125 cents. So we're seeing, we're seeing prices out there at a penny, you know, around a penny cheaper, a penny a kilowatt hour cheaper. So if you look at the bottom, if, let's say you were to obtain that price, which I think you're going to obtain better, you might even get into the seventies, you know, the high sevens, I really don't know. It's hard to say in a true auction what the prices will come out to be, but at this price, which I think is, you'd probably do a little better, is 13,700 annually savings over what JCP&L would provide. And if you look at the next page I provided, that's the street lighting.
What is this page?
This page on the top would say, City of Long Branch Lighting Accounts.
Yep.
And so in the past 12 months for your lighting accounts, you have paid JCP&L a price of .059 cents. So if you look at the suppliers, you're going to get, I believe, in the low five cent range, and the savings is going to be probably around 10,000. So with these two combined annually, I believe you're going to get anywhere from 25,000 to 35,000 savings off of what JCP&L would provide on an annual basis. 35,000 on the high side, 25,000, you know, probably on the low side. Could be anywhere, I'm just throwing it dark, but that's pretty much what we're seeing out in the market. And another thing that changed, we found out recently of local contract law, street lighting, local units can procure up to five years. So you can lock in a rate up to five years. Natural gas, you can lock in a rate up to three years. Electric, you can only lock in a rate for two years. So you have five-year prices, as you can see on the street lighting, all the way down. A lot of folks are locking in longer terms. In Pennsylvania, we do a lot, we do the same thing with government, most government locks in three to four years, Pennsylvania for electricity and natural gas. Natural gas, you have, you do have some usage in natural gas, but we suggest you stay with your natural gas provider because the price to compare has always been lower than what the suppliers can offer. So natural gas, again, is, it changes every month, it's dictated by the market. As far as electricity, it changes once a year, so the electricity isn't as volatile, you know, the price is for the next year.
How is your, how is your company compensated?
We get paid only if you sign the agreement with the supplier. So again, there's no obligation to move forward with the supplier. If you pass the resolution, you run the auction, you like the savings, and you, you know, again, you have to sign within like 24 hours.
I'm sorry, you, we pay you or you sign with the supplier?
No, 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 we're paid by the supplier only, you don't pay us. There's no contract between E-MEX and the city of Long Branch. The only contract will be if, let's say, if Hudson Energy wins the auction, you sign a contract with Hudson Energy, and then Hudson Energy will pay us a fee, or, you know, whatever supplier win the auction.
So you say we have to sign the contract in 24 hours, Dave, how do we do that? What, do we authorize in advance the execution of the contract?
What, what would happen is if, if we, if you guys agree to move forward, we would do a, what they call a trigger resolution at the next meeting, and he would have, he would have the rates that he has up until that time. And then, you would then pass the resolution based on the price that we've done through the auction, and then you would sign the contract at either.
You've got a very narrow window to sign because of the fluctuation of the rates.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but then that's.
So you would have to do it that day.
What I'm trying, what I'm trying to figure is, just working through the mechanics of the timing of it.
Yeah, I thought, tonight, you do have the resolution, if you pass the resolution tonight, we have an auction schedule tomorrow that we put on the auction, you don't have to do it, but we have the auction scheduled for tomorrow at 12 o'clock, the two auctions. And if you pass the resolution tonight, you're free to sign the contract, but yes, you do, after, after the time period, because it's the market rate, after the time period that the suppliers come in with the auction, if, you know, if the market goes up, the supplier might not basically agree to the contract.
So then, we, we pass the resolution first? Is that what happens?
Yes, they pass the resolution.
Yeah, you have to, but we didn't, the reason why we didn't put it on the agenda tonight, because we want, we, there's some people that have been through the process before, but you have other council people, we wanted to sit down.
And by the way, I understand all of that, I just wanted, I was just trying to understand, whenever it is that we do this, it's, it's a function of, we pass the resolution first, and then the next day, or whatever, did you do the auction, and then George signs the contract?
Right, right. Yes, yes.
I understand. Yeah, no, I understand why you wouldn't have put it on tonight, because nobody knows anything about it.
Now, from my, from my information, in the past, have you had a mechanism, mechanism to run it by the council to see that they're satisfied? Because the numbers can be all over.
Yes, I'm glad you brought up that point. What can happen is, the actual time of the auction, it's a live auction.
Yeah.
So we can give them a passcode, we've done that in the past, and they can actually, actually see the auction take place. It might be four, five, six different people, and you can actually watch the auction, and then if they have comments or if they have concerns, then that can be addressed the minute the auction's over. It takes between five and 10 minutes, it depends on how many times they keep bidding on it. You know, you have people that come in late into the auction, but they can see what the results are going to be, and then if they have any, any questions, they can either ask myself or John, you know, immediately after the auction is over.
I mean, it's interesting, the first time, and you have, initially, you know, you're a little near it, like, well, wait a minute, but, I mean, Mary, you know, Mr. Smith has been here for several years, as has Dave, you know, taking us through the process. It's pretty interesting. I mean, I think all of us at one point have, I mean, you've been here, what, two, three, four times, right?
Six years you've been a client, six years, this will be the seventh, eighth year.
So, and we've always saved significant amount of money.
Yes, you have, always saved, over JCP&L. PSENG clients don't save as much, it seems JCP&L is still the price compare, and the suppliers, their rates are, you know, a penny or half penny cheaper. In your case, it's a penny cheaper for the main load and maybe close to a penny for the lighting.
But I'm just throwing out that we've, we've done this several times.
Yeah.
And the auction is interesting to watch, by the way.
Let me ask you a question, the equipment on the street, it belongs to JCP&L. If Hudson Energy takes over, who do we care that? JCP&L still or?
Yeah, so only one-third of your, only one-third of your bill is going to go to Hudson. So the other two-thirds are going to be JCP&L for repairing everything else. They're always responsible.
Yeah, they sell the lines and all the maintenance, and if you lose power, you still call down. This is just the, what's the, what they're buying off the grid, right?
Correct, yes, it's just the supply.
I think the library is a client too, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So we've been doing this with you for six years. How do you get back to JCP&L? Why are you still not, why are we still not in this auction?
Well, I, the first thing would be, we didn't want to, we, you can't automatically switch into doing it without coming in, what's the contract, so we have to come before you guys and get permission to do it. Other than that, we're missing, I think, one month out of just initially, so you just, we're going to go back for one month or two months, and then once the auction is done and you guys approve it, then we'll just switch back. There's no penalty, there's not anything involved, but we first wanted to come to you and, and.
So we're basically renewing our contract with you, is that what we're talking about?
No, you're going to, you're going to go out to auction, and you'll probably get another, another supplier, it could be the same supplier or another supplier.
But in terms of our partnership with you?
Yes.
There's no contract, there's no contracts with E-MEX.
We don't have a contract.
Okay, okay, okay.
So there's a, there's a state program that DCA uses that allows us to authorize them to act on our behalf.
Okay.
So it's through a DCA pilot program, so it's, in a normal world, we would procure their services to go through this for us, but that's not what's happening now because of the DCA program.
Okay.
Like, almost like buying off a state contract.
Who was our contract with last time, last year?
You had a contract with Constellation, I believe, and you got, I can tell you.
We've had Constellation, we've had Hudson.
So why are we comparing against JCP&L if they're not our current provider?
Well.
For, so you jump right in. No, it's not, because right now.
If you went back to JCP&L, those are the rates you'd pay. Currently, you pay, with Aggressive Energy, you pay 8225. That contract, when that contract's over, you go in an index rate, so we send you back to JCP&L. So you don't want to be in an index rate, and the contract for Constellation is 4915.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah.
We were talking about.
4915 for the lighting account?
4915 right now is what, is what you were paying, what the rates were before, and 8225 is the main load rates?
8225?
822, 8225, yes.
Yeah, now, now I am absolutely substantially confused.
Yeah.
So let's, let's look at, are we looking at the lighting account or the other?
We can look at the main load.
So let's look at the main load.
Okay.
So who is our current provider?
Current provider is Aggressive Energy.
Okay, so they're not even on here, like, okay. And what is our current rate?
They might be, they might, they might, they'll probably bid, but their current rate is .0825, 8225.
Okay, and I guess what I'm trying to say is that when we're projecting what the savings are.
I'll project it off what your current rates are now in a new sheet.
Right.
When we run the auction, if that's what you want to say.
Because I, I speak for Mike, because he's a man of few words, because what he's going to say to me is, this is what I'm going to put in the budget this year.
I got it.
Saving money next year in the budget, how much are my savings, right, Mike?
Yes, but since I've been through this process before, I know that we're only saving money off JCP&L. I know we're probably not going to save a significant amount of money off what we're currently paying.
Correct, when your contract's up, you go in index rate, you never want to go off contract.
So, so what you're telling us essentially is to, to at least maintain what we have now, we have to continue to do this, otherwise, we're going to, we're going to ratchet back up to the JCP&L's rate.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so, right, so even if, even if it's, even if it's, even if it was more, which I don't think it will be, it will still be less than JCP&L.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's going to be very good.
So that makes sense.
Yeah.
Right, that, that makes sense.
Exactly where my point was at.
So even, by the way, even more, even more reasons to do it, otherwise, you're going to, you're getting an increase.
But it's just, you're, you're presenting a more realistic picture.
Yeah, this is not off your current.
Exactly.
Your current rate, but the answer is, is that, maybe the better way to put it is that if you don't do this, that's when it's going to go up.
Yeah.
John, how current are these numbers, the top energy supply quotes that you obtain? How current are these?
They're current, but the, here's the deal, they're, they're just opening bids. I think you could get in the sevens as far as the main load.
Okay.
You know, it could be much better, so when we run an auction and they start competing against each other.
I know, the, the time of year has an influence on the rates, how are we for this time of year?
This time of year is a great time, because it's a shoulder month, so here, March, April, you know, they're shoulder months. In the winter time, in the middle of the winter, December, January, sometimes it's good, but this winter, the market spiked up significantly in December and January, significantly, it came down a lot.
Okay.
But you also have 24 hours to reject the bid, right, once it, once, once you agree to the auction price, right?
Well, if you sign the contract, I'm not sure, ask the question.
Well, in other words, the auction takes place in the morning.
Correct.
We agree to something, right?
Yeah.
And then, but then you can, you can back out of that.
You can back out anytime.
Right.
Until you sign the contract.
You're not until you're in.
Yeah. Once you sign the contract.
Then.
Yeah.
The contract's good for two years, you said?
Contracts are good for two years, we have, we'll run an auction with options for one year, 18 months, two years for the main load, and one year, eight, I think, maybe two years, three years, four years, five years for the street light.
And when the auction.
You'll see the grid, so the auction's five minutes, and the last two minutes, if any supplier bids any, any low offer for any term, clock goes back to two minutes, so the auction can last 15 minutes, 20 minutes, depends how competitive they get, depends if one of the suppliers puts a real low bid and nobody can come back. It could, it could be over in seven minutes, five minutes, but normally, they last anywhere between five and 15 is normal. Bigger ones last longer, so.
Are any of our streetlight solar panels available? Any of the streetlights, do you have any solar panel available?
I haven't seen them, I don't think so. I haven't seen them.
Maybe.
You see them around the state because PSE and JCP&L have this commitment to some percentage of their, their.
They get some kind of credit, I believe.
Some kind of credit for it, so they do it like randomly around the state, you'll see a solar panel, but they don't really have a program to do that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
No.
Well, any other questions, is, are we in any jeopardy by doing this two weeks from now, is that okay?
I would say so. I haven't set up for tomorrow, but I didn't realize that you didn't have the resolution, so what I'll do is I'll just move it out two weeks, that's fine. That's easy.
Yeah, it's fine. Just want to make sure everybody's good with it, they understand the process. And then what we'll do is, once we, prior to him setting up the auction, we'll make sure that, you know, everybody here has a password, so you can actually watch it, because what will happen is all of these suppliers will be bidding on all these terms, 12, 18, 24, and you can actually watch it, it's pretty neat.
So I sent, yeah, I sent out a link with a conference bridge, where you can watch the link, the user, the password, username, password, and the conference bridge.
John, once, once the results are in and you see all our options, will you, as our consultant, give us a recommendation as to whether or not, which of these would be the most beneficial for benefit of the council and the rest of us here?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
Because we'll need a thumbs up or thumbs down from the council, but I'd like to get your expertise as to what would be most beneficial for the city.
I will, for sure.
And if they're really bad, you'll tell us, don't do it.
Don't worry, I'll tell you.
Really bad is if it's over JCP.
Yeah, well, even if it's not, I've been through that experience where we had a consultant tell us to hold off three different solicitations, it wasn't the auction, but.
I told Harvey Cedars to hold off today and not to do it. I told Harvey Cedars to hold off today and not to do it. And their contract's up in June, and they didn't get a great rate. So, I told them not to move forward, and we'll see. We might send it back to the utility.
Both lights in Harvey Cedars? Those would be a lot?
It was just the main load. They're not that big yet.
Both streetlights are Harvey Cedars.
It was a couple of houses. But, we did tell, yeah, they didn't do that well. But, according to, well, some towns have great, there's a lot that goes into credit rating, load factors, the way you use electricity, into what price you'll get against JCPN or any utility. And some towns, actually, we tell them not to move forward because they can't beat the price to compare. It's not as common in JCPN, but it's very common in PSENG and some other utilities throughout all the deregulated states, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess I'm next. I, we briefly discussed this, but I have some handouts that I just pulled off the internet. But, at one time, in RJ, maybe you could talk about it. We had a shade tree commission in Long Branch. And I don't, you know, can you tell us a little bit about that, like what happened to...
Yeah, we had, I think, there was an adamant member of it. Bill, I can't think of what his last name was, but he was always up in our face at the council about the trees because he cared about them and he wanted something done. So, he always would tell us, give us the problem, and then he'd try to solve it. Well, sometimes his solutions were not the best way, but he did save the trees. I think, my personal opinion is, I think we need something like this in the, in the city. Because if I'm not mistaken, recently, that one project they had, they took up all the trees. And they were beautiful trees. And I think when the school built the schools, they didn't have to take all those trees along Bath Avenue, which they did. So, it's, it's important that we have somebody watching out for our poor little trees.
I think that's a good idea.
So, I think we're talking about a different ordinance though. So, shade tree ordinances are, the purpose of shade tree ordinance is to plant trees along the streets. And, well, shade or, or aesthetics. And there was a time when virtually everybody had them. And the reason that they had them is because if you had a shade tree commission and you planted a tree along, you know, everybody plants trees between the sidewalk and the curb. And of course, they lift up the curbs. Shade tree ordinances, the shade tree commissions used to have a liability exception that when people trip on the sidewalks as a result of the trees, you couldn't get... But, our court extinguished that, and because of that, the shade tree commission started to fade away because there really wasn't any reason to do it because the city could plant the trees if they wanted to. I think what the councilwoman is talking about is a tree conservation ordinance, and I'm really familiar with them. I think I might have written the first one of them in Sarago. And that is an ordinance that says, if you have a piece of land and it has 300 trees on it, and they're all more than two inches in diameter, you have to either pay $300 into a tree fund, or you have to plant that many trees someplace else. And, and when you do that, you establish literally a side of the tree fund that allows you to then go plant those trees wherever you want. You can plant them along roads if you want to, you can plant them in parks. Or, you can require people who take down 100 trees on a, on a project to replant 200 trees. I think it's a tree, that's a tree conservation ordinance. So, shade tree ordinances don't stop you from tearing down trees. They deal with the city planting trees. Tree conservation ordinances, which is, I think, what we're talking about if I read the councilwoman correct, is if we want to plant people, stop people from cutting down trees. And it requires you to get a tree permit. It stops clear cutting of lots. It usually has some exception for somebody who owns a single-family lot, needed to, you know, the trees that need to go down to build it.
I have a follow-up question.
Right, yeah. So, usually, usually it has that, but it does have, you know, it does have provisions that basically require you to have a tree plan. So, our, you know, Bill is probably, and Shannon are probably pretty familiar with this. It's not unusual to have these ordinances in place where you have to, you have to mark, you have to tag and mark every tree that's more than two inches in diameter and, and, you know, there's a calculation as to what their cost is if you're going to take them down. And then, you have a fund that's dedicated to just planting trees. And there are some towns that use those funds to plant trees. You don't have to just plant them in public parks. You know, it allows, there's a fund that you can go out and buy trees and, and give them to people who are pined on it. They're, they're, you know, private property, and it's a kind of a nice benefit, but it's funded by, you know, funded by contributions, right? Bill, I don't know if you've had some experience with these kind of ordinance. They're, they're pretty common ordinances these days.
Yeah, they're very common, and usually it's handled at an board level, planning board is on board where it's enforced, a survey or a document, exactly what you just said, the number of trees, how big they are. And then, they present a plan of how they're going to, what they're going to take down and where they're going to plant new ones.
Correct. And if, and if there's a difference between the two, what the contributions are. Five, oh, who am I, I'm not ready to... Would you trick me? That wasn't fair.
Sorry, you're talking about trees and we're on the environmental commission, so I can't just sit and be quiet about it. But, but a tree preservation ordinance is something that the green team and the environmental commission are looking into proposing as well. And April 6th, we are, we are working in conjunction with the New Jersey Forestry Department that gives out the free trees. So, we'll be at the library April 6th if you want to come.
And, and some of those ordinances that I've seen require them to have a, what's the, what's the licensed profession that, that forestry, it's not, it's a...
Arborist.
Arborist, that the plant has to be prepared by an arborist. Councilwoman, is that what, is that what you are looking to do?
Uh huh.
Okay. Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. We lose a lot of trees and people just go clear a lot and they don't have to clear all those trees if they own a house.
Yeah, and it has prohibitions against you doing that because one of the things, so typically what happens is, as Bill says, that part of a development application, you have to have a, have a plan. But, there also is another part of the ordinance that talks about getting a tree removal permit. Because there are some trees that are, you know, specimen trees that you don't want to have removed, and you certainly don't want to have somebody going in, clear a lot, and then file a planning board application saying, well, I don't need a tree removal plan because there's no trees on it. So, you know, they have, they have both of those sides. And then, and they do take into account and, and, you know, will, will give you the, kind of the options about what kind of exemptions you want to have.
If I may, normally what we do every year is we list a, a tree professional forestry along with the RFQ. So, if anything pops up that they need to have support with a grant, or the city needs to have trees removed, we already have someone that's approved by, by council, and we can just enter into an agreement with them based on the proposal.
Yeah. And there's usually exceptions for, you know, if you have a tree, but it's diseased and those kind of things, that, that's, that's the city official who you, you'll say, look, I want to take down this tree. It's, you know, it's rotted and, and you get, you have permission to do it, and if not, doesn't implicate the ordinance then. So, it's not, purpose of this is to do exactly what I think the councilwoman wants to do, which is prevent, as development happens, these trees coming down. And then, you can establish a fund that you can spend in a way that, you know, and in most of the towns that I'm in, the environmental commission kind of weighs in on that as to, you know, where those, those trees might go. And it's part of their review of, of planning applications to, you know, it's pretty common for them to comment on, you know...
Like plans.
Yeah, we think they can plant the trees here, or they can't plant them, what they, what they can. And it also has, typically has some standards for what trees are going to be planted.
Right, which you've done a study on, right?
Yes, we're really focusing and, and working on a public education program for native plants and trees that would support local wildlife.
But, my point too is, why, you know, why can't we combine the two? I would, you know, shade tree commission, you know, and also conservation as well.
You can. You certainly, you certainly have. And then, what the shade tree commission then does is, it kind of supplements what the environmental commission does, is they, they make recommendations to the, to the city about you planting along public streets, the types of trees that you, you know, you don't tend to have the kind of sprawl subdivisions here, though you have some of them that you might have where, you know, you're putting in two miles of new streets. That's not kind of what the development that happens here. But, in those kind of communities, the shade tree commission is who weighs in on what kind of trees go along those streets.
I, when I worked for a builder in Romston, they actually had this woman that did come out, and she would find the builders that they took trees down. And they were required to fill out permits to, to take them down, and then they had to replant so many trees. And it's just what you were discussing.
Yeah, and depending on how big the tree is, it's not, you know, if it's a two-inch tree, then it might be one for one. But, if it's a 10-inch tree, it might be four for one.
Yeah, we've got to factor that with our demolition permits because when they take, take down the houses, they take the trees. And when they don't come to build, there's no trees. They say, I don't need a, like you said, a tree report.
So, maybe we can move forward with something like that if everyone's interested, and then meet with the environmental commission as well and join forces and discuss the...
Well, I'll reach, I'll talk to the city, George or I'll talk to the city planner. I'm sure he's very familiar with these two, and he can take the first crack at putting it all together.
Okay, great. Good. Thank you. At this time, we wanted to take a little time for any board updates from our city council members.
Oh, I, I think, did we want to talk about how we wanted to do board updates?
We can.
With the idea, this is what I'm saying, I may be, I may be wrong, but the idea, where did I have the conversation with? That, that, you know, we have all of our boards and they're busy working, I mean, just like we're hearing all the work from the environmental commission tonight. And it, to have a stronger connection with them in some way. And I think the discussion was going to be, what way is, is, is best so that we kind of stay connected, we stay on track, you know, we're all working in the, in the, in the same direction. And so, I think the discussion was going to be, what's the best way to do that? Have the different, you know, boards?
Well, you go to the cable commission.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you have anything to discuss that you, you know, discussed at the cable commission that you would like to, you know, bring forward to the council as to what, what they're doing, what their plans are?
Okay.
I mean, that's what I remarked.
That's the way, so, so then as liaisons, then we'll do the, the reports? Okay.
And if there's not a liaison, just sort of a quarterly update from the Darius Commission and Board, just what's going on.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, the cable commission met last week or the week, week before. I think the biggest thing that we're talking about is the TV show, to get that back on the mayor's show. And right now, it's looking like Kevin, who's the chair for that, for that commission, is going to be talking with Monmouth University, who I guess we've worked with before. So, I think he's chatting with them in April. And the plan is on the outside, to have the program start in early fall, when the students come back in, in early fall. I think in the interim, since that's a lot will happen between now and, and the fall semester, Jessica has really, you know, she's very anxious to have the students involved with things. So, another outlet for all of us for any events that we want to have covered is to contact Jessica, and the students will come, and they'll tape an event, they'll do interviews. They actually came to our event on Monday night, and they were spectacular. But, the whole idea of increased publicity is kind of what we're, we're looking at.
I'm sure that might be a good venue for the environmental commission too, to get the word out about the balloons and, you know, everything that you're doing to reach out to the cable commission.
Somebody from the cable commission was at the environmental commission meeting.
I missed that.
Yeah, he did offer his...
Yeah, I thought it was Kevin that came because you were meeting the same night we were. And he said, let me just go right down the hall.
I introduced myself to him as we were coming upstairs, and he said, I'm going to a different meeting. And he came in here and he was at our meeting again, so...
Yeah. So, and, and I know that Lindsay, of course, is very active in terms of kind of like a central point of contact for any of us that, you know, want publicity or coverage of any sort of event. And I think she basically has like a, a list of, you know, all the different media to contact and, and everything. So, this is all in the context of being able to get the word out more in terms of what we're doing. Thank you.
The planning board is, the last 30 days have been a little slow because the new members that we have came in and the new chair, and they had to review the transcripts, and they hadn't been able to do that yet. They were waiting for transcripts, so they were proud to review them. The two major applications that we have is the 7-Eleven, which you mostly know, at Broadway where the old Harley-Davies is. That's one of the ones that we heard already, but for the voting, we need the transcripts for that. And the other application is the one on South, on Beth Avenue and Westwood Avenue. That's the apartment building that's supposed to go up there. And that was supposed to come in front of us, but they didn't have the 100-year storm drain program with them, and so they pushed it back for another 30 days. So, we're going to hear that next month. And that's pretty much it. And then, we got Nick, as you know, taking over Carl's job, and I haven't really worked with him yet, but I'm looking forward to work with him. And then, all the new board members that we have are great. We all come together, and it seems like we know what we're doing over there.
It's going to get very busy, Councilman.
I hear that.
Nick's got lots of traffic. People were waiting for him to get in there two weeks ago.
I know.
It's going to come and come fast.
We had, we had a last meeting like two weeks ago, we had it off because of those two applications. And now, we've got to get back to work.
Yeah, just catching up quickly.
Councilman Daniel?
I'm a liaison, one of the police and Public Works. And I've spoken to Stan a few times, and everything seems to be going well. They have a different attitude since we've taken over, in a positive way, and some good, good comments slash compliments in regards to, seeing the difference from several months ago to... In regards to the police department, I have no comment there.
Councilwoman, do I...
I serve on the safety and the insurance committee for the city. And the safety has decreased among the police department and the public works. We still have some problems, but the supervisors are on top of it, and I think they're doing a good job. The insurance is the same as it has been, and I don't believe there's going to be any increase at all. Of course, I'm a liaison to the senior center, and they, at the mayor's request, they are going to institute a new program come the first of April, which will be four sessions a month you will get for free. And you come in and you have to get a ticket punched. You only get four for free. If you want to come more, you pay for it. And it is $3 a, $3 a session.
That's it. May I ask a question? What do you mean when you say that the safety has decreased?
I can't hear you, Anita.
What do you mean when you say the safety has decreased? What, do you have any more details on that?
The safety committee you're talking about?
Yeah, and you said, "Safety has decreased."
Let's explain that. Do you want to ask her again?
When you were doing your update, you started off by saying, "Safety has decreased."
Insurance.
The safety incidences have decreased.
That's right, that's right, the safety incident, okay. Safety incidences have decreased, okay, thank you.
Can I, would you like to talk about the library?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm on the library board, so the library, I think by the end of April should be complete. The entire basement has been renovated, so they're putting in a state-of-the-art movie theater, which I think seats 25 or 30. The community room has been able to double in size, so I think they can, they'll be able to accommodate over 100 people in there, or double the size of whatever it was upstairs. There's a boardroom for groups to meet, and several different rooms down there, including the, as you know, we have the only statewide library that has a full-time social worker, so he has his own office where he can be private and meet with the clients that he meets with. So the whole, everything in the library is just going to be really nice. And I think they're going to have a ribbon cutting around the end of April, the first week in there.
Go ahead.
Just to go on your, on the whole idea of the board, I mean, in addition to the boards and commissions, you know, when we, when you think of like the recreation department or tax assessors office or whatever, we generally hear from them, if you think about it, when there's a budget request or a budget time, might be a good idea too, on a quarterly basis, get department heads in here to just talk about their department, for the community to know, and for us to just be familiar as well.
That would be a great idea.
That is a great idea.
Yeah, like, anything to say about the finance committee?
Well, we met with the finance committee, and we're going to be presenting our budget soon, and...
Next meeting, we're next, yes.
And at that time, we'll, you know, have our discussions, and we meet again, I think, on next Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah, so we meet, you know, once a month. And I'm also on the Environmental Commission, but I've missed a few meetings because of tax season, so was there anything else you wanted to add, since you were both here?
We'd like to thank you for the communication that we've gotten from the city. There was a little miscommunication at the beginning, but I think we're all moving forward in the same direction. And part of that's going to be if we can get a reduction in plastic use in town. It would be beneficial for the environment, and as Michelle was saying, it might be a little difficult with the supermarkets, but we want to go and speak to them first, and at least find out what their feelings are about it, so we can have some type of an approach that everybody's going to look at and say, "This is a good idea, we can move forward with this." There are approximately 20 towns in New Jersey that have banned single-use plastic bags in 2018. The expectation for this year is double or triple that. And if the state, if we get ahead of it, we can put in whatever is comfortable for long branch, rather than having a state-mandated plastics ban that may not work well for the city. And being that we've got five miles of coast, there's a lot of opportunity for plastic to end up in the ocean, or in the rivers, or in any other body of water. But what we really liked today is thank you all for putting us in a position where we'll feel that the efforts that we have are appreciated. So, thank you very much.
And Rich, thank you for all that you do, not only here, but statewide. So if we could give any assistance to any of the extended programs, let us know as well to another.
We have a good number of things that we'll be doing in spring and in summer. We're going to have the surf contest again on June 8th. But, you know, the city's been great partners, and we want to make the boardwalk area, we want to plant flowers and trees and things. There are a lot of nice things that we have in the works, so, but thank you very much for your support.
And then, Benanti from the Green Team, you know, I'd just like to support, I'm on both the Green Team and an alternate to the Environmental Commission, supporting what Rich just said, you know, in terms of the Green Team feeling. There's a very receptive mayor and council out there that's, you know, working with both our groups, and it's very encouraging, more than encouraging, it's motivating. You know, the composting has just gotten bigger and bigger, and the possibility of a plastic bottle refillable fountain on the boardwalk, you know, is moving forward. You know, I understand that's, you know, also being considered. So there's, you know, lots of things that, you know, we've been interested, that we've been able to, you know, work together on, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question from the finance committee.
Sure.
And possibly Mike Martin. When will we get the budget for the actual personnel, the payroll?
That'll come out Thursday with the agenda for the next meeting, next Thursday.
Couple of weeks.
Next Thursday.
Right.
Ten days from now.
All right. And we just had our budget hearing a little, couple of weeks ago, and my question for that is, who prepares those budgets? And the reason I'm asking is because I got the, for some of them departments, department heads, what have you, it was almost like it was the first time they were looking at.
Does department head submit those requests?
Okay, well, okay, that's, again, it's my first time, I've been at budget hearings, a budget meeting, you know, with the board for 12 years. I was just a little surprised that they, some of them didn't seem to understand what was on their own budget. Is it prepared?
They submitted them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You know, just to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Dangliff said, just from the cable commission, when we talked about the budget, our chair wasn't aware of the fact that he either needed to submit something, or what was going to, because we asked, you know, what does the budget look like for next year?
The commissions were, and usually are, not always contacted for their budgets, because sometimes the commissioners change each year, it usually flows through administration, which this year was a little bumpy.
Sketchy.
Because, you know, who all the players were, something changed.
Okay.
We'll be sure to get a little more contact with them next year.
Okay.
But we didn't cut any of the commissioners' budgets from previous year, so this should be okay.
And usually from the past experience here, Jane, you can say this, like Kevin, for example, I remember there was a, you know, there was a sort of annual budget that always remained the same in his budget, and then at one point, it was a few years ago, he had just sort of made a request, I guess, to the mayor, to each deputy, and some of the other councilmen, and, you know, we just had these additional needs, we should consider it. And then, you know, we would, one of us would reach out to the mayor and, you know, so it happens kind of that way too.
Okay.
But I agree with you that, you know, it should be included in the whole process.
So, Mike, when the budget is presented two weeks from now, at what stage is the budget? Is it done? So we, our last meeting, there was some negotiation back and forth, there was some concern about the total number. So, up until the time that we see it again, can we assume that that number has been addressed?
We'll meet on Thursday for the finance committee meeting. It'll be finalized by then, but it won't be produced, so.
So that would be the time for the council to react to it?
That would be the time for the finance committee to react to it.
Right. It's the meeting next Thursday.
Right. But it will only be the finance committee? It wouldn't be the...
Yes.
Yeah.
George and the mayor and I will review it even before it gets to you guys.
Well, but if there are suggestions, correct? I mean, I've made suggestions in the past.
Certainly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, feel free.
But if you're holding on to something, tell me now.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, you know, for like your involvement and your involvement, and for Mary Jane, since Rose and I are the only ones on that finance committee, we would be the only ones participating in that review, not the full council.
But I think after we do meet, I think then we should give this information to the other council to review.
Okay.
So...
Now, it's always giving out that.
And give them our report and what we know, and then if they have any questions, they're certainly, you know, should feel free to contact Mike or George or...
And just in response to Councilman Dangliff's question, when the council gets to see who's concerned about salaries, are they just going to see what's in the budget document? The sum of all those, are they going to get it?
Individual by department, broken down by person, personnel.
So you'll get a really close-up look. Because in the budget document, you just get totals by department for the most part.
No, this will be a full detail.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well, since we're on that subject, is there any other items that you'd like to address regarding the agenda?
I just had two comments. One was about the Green Acres grant, and if I recall correctly, Jake, when you presented it, I know everything is going through with the Jerry Morgan Park and all that stuff is fine, but you had also said that there still could be time and could be money if we wanted to put in another grant. So my question is, is there anything else in the works besides?
No.
No?
The RH is actually having the submission of the grant application, but it's too late to consider anything else.
It's too late.
Okay. Okay, then I had just one other comment, I can't pull it up on my laptop, I don't know why it's not coming up, but it had to do with the support of the wildlife plan, which I totally agree with and everything, but what I like about the way that was written is it explained what support meant. You know, it had the bullets at the end of it, and it said, "These are the things that are going to happen." And that has to do with, there were a few other topics that we've talked about, and we've kind of said, "They have the administration's support, but defining what support really means." You know, I just wanted to bring that up as we look at some future topics. I can give you some examples if you want, but I just wanted to really comment that the way this one in particular, this resolution is written, is very helpful, because it describes exactly what we mean by support. And I think we need to be clear on that when we...
And just so you know, that was given, and Ed, I don't know if you have anything to add or pump and correct about what I'm saying, that was Rob Faragina, I think, who's part of the Sustainable Jersey with the Green Team, had asked that that be put on because they're ready to submit their application.
Okay.
And Lou reviewed it, correct? And am I right about that, or not, that that was, or Michelle?
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is it's like an additional 10 points, you know, if there's a resolution.
Yeah, I was bringing that up, you know, kind of in context of another initiative that we've heard about, which is community, which is a wonderful, wonderful initiative. And it came forward in terms of requesting the administration's support, which we totally support, but then the question is, what does support mean? So when we revisit that, just to try to give some definition to what does support mean for an organization.